Okay.
Yeah.
Now we're so.
And you should be able to do that as co-hosts.
Okay.
As well.
So why don't we start over with a new time marking the beginning and everything?
Yeah, I was gonna suggest that. Alright, so I am recalling this meeting to order at of the January nineteen twenty twenty one meeting at six forty four P M. And do we need to go through the pledge of allegiance again? For record sake? I'll just say that we did say the pledge of allegiance. Our hearts are devoted to our country. And now that Joe is on with us on the roll call, everybody is currently in attendance from the planning commission except for Commissioner Huggins. And we will note him if he does log in later and is having technical difficulties. And with that, we will go ahead back to the consent agenda. And we'll entertain a motion to approve if there are no edits.
Want me to repeat it? To approve the meeting minutes of November seventeen, two thousand and twenty?
A second.
Alright, it's been moved by Commissioner Fatisi, saying by Commissioner Fernet to approve the minutes from the November seventeen twenty twenty meeting. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? And it's approved. General public comment, there is no general public comment period during the virtual meetings. John or Catherine, did we receive any sort of last minute written comments?
Nope, none for me.
Alright. No general comments. Moving along to new business, since there's no public hearing or unfinished business. We have two items of new business, the first of which is the review of and possible amendments to the city regulations for electronic reader boards in the central business district. And John, I believe you are the one leading us in on this one?
Yes. Okay, so this started with a request from the city council member to address electronic reader boards in the central business district. So before we get into the history and all, let's talk about what an electronic reader board is. That's, I think it's pretty self-explanatory, but that's the the animated signs that you program and it can have images and words and lots of different colors and kind of a infinite ability to project whatever. It's like a TV screen, but typically they've got like LED lights in it. And some of them can be brighter, some of them are less bright. There's a million ways that those things can run. But if you're all familiar with what an electronic reader board is in this instance, then I can move on. We had a request from a city council member to look at whether or not we should allow it in some allow those signs in some parts of the central business district. We've had some business owners that would like to put a reader board up. And they're very expensive, so it's kind of a big big task for a business owner to purchase and put one up. So they want to make sure that the rules allow for it. So they checked with us and we said, so in our design standards, it states that flashing animated, rotating, changing message signs and signs that combine a white background with the internal illumination are specifically prohibited. Exposed neon illumination or shielded external illumination are accepted alternatives. So you know neon board neon sign, but you can't have a reader board according to our design standards. So on behalf of the business owner and I've heard from other business owners too that were interested in doing and having a reader board, I think even the library maybe wanted one at one point. And so we just, you know, as the planning department, we tell them it's not allowed per the design standards. So we usually try to come up with alternatives for them and figure out what their goals are and help them get to what they are looking to do, but strictly speaking, they're not allowed. So if you've had a chance to look at the the packet that we sent, there's we wanted to bring up about how the planning commission feels about should reader boards be allowed in parts of the CBD? And if so, which parts? And if so, what kind of regulations do we put on it? You probably saw that in under current sign standards, that we do allow electronic reader boards in other parts of the city. But we don't really specifically have hardened, fast details saying, you know, putting bounds on it. All we really have right now is, you know, can I create traffic hazards by causing excessive diversion of attention and contains flashing or uncomfortably intense lights? So those are really the only two things that limit what a reader board can look like now. Though, if if the planning commission makes any recommendations for allowing reader boards in the central business district or parts thereof, then we'd also have to talk about putting better bounds on regulating what those reader boards will look like. And several recommendations were included from council member Custy on page six of the packet. And I've been researching some of these and they're pretty good. They're a very good start for a very good start for putting bounds on it on those reader boards. And I think even if the planning commission doesn't come up with any recommendation for allowing reader boards in the central business district, I think we should look at including these requirements on reader boards anyway. So council member Custy put these together, looking at other jurisdictions requirements and I don't know if we would necessarily adopt it right on, you know, like every one of them. Some of them may be a little redundant. But we can pick and choose from them. We can, I've been researching some of the detailed numbers, like they talk about a maximum brightness of, you know, a certain amount of NITS, N I T S, which are a measurement of light intensity. And so I've been trying to learn more about what five thousand NITS are compared to two hundred, compared to twenty thousand. And I wanted to get some more information about those details to the planning commission at a later time. But for today, we're just wanted to get the ball rolling, talk about if if we do have them in the central business district, where would we, where would the planning commission recommend them? And then we can worry about the details of making sure that they're not too bright, flashy, anything like that. So to kick it off, we also included a map of the central business district on page four of your packet. And you can see it covers quite a bit of area. But herein lies the issue, like along State Street, for much of State Street, it's kind of a commercial strip. Not exactly the same feel as say Metcalf Street, which has a very downtown feel. Anecdotally speaking, most people that I've talked to about this issue believe that, you know, there's we shouldn't allow them on Metcalf Street. But the planning commission can recommend whatever they like. But that's the feedback that I've received. And then there's also parts of the central business district that are mostly residential. So if you look over on the western part, along there on Boursath Street and Woodworth Street, east, I'm sorry, west of the tracks, there's no commercial over there. It's mostly residential with a, you know, occasional storage building or something. Does it make sense for us to allow reader boards on those streets? So not really looking for answers about where we should allow them today, but I wanted to get the planning commission really discussing the issues and pros and cons. And so that's all I got for you. I'll let you go and I'll answer any questions you might have.
Who wants to dig in first?
Yeah, so I thought I agree with with John's comments. I thought council member Kestie's groundwork was pretty good to start off with. Is there anybody that wants to dig in as far as where or? Yes, Commissioner Fatisi?
Well, to start off with, signs are a really, really, really big deal in the commercial real estate world. They're highly regulated and over the years I've learned more about signs than I really want to know. So I took a look at the Kestie memorandum here and she's on to some things. However, we need to nail down in the beginning definitions. Okay, definitions are really important. There's a big difference between a monument sign and a pylon sign. So let's go off to what she did because she did do a lot of groundwork and I'm fine with that. A monument sign is very, very different than in her item eight, twenty foot high, like a house drive and those are pylon signs. Monument sign example would be Bingham Park. Okay, basically there are signage that starts at the ground that goes up. Life Care Center would be another monument sign. Pylon signs, again, House Drive-In, Smuggler Brothers, those are elevated. So if we're going to limit it to monument signs, that item eight about a height of twenty feet, that needs to come out. Okay, and then you get into the issue of percentages of the splay. Like in her, her item one, they can't make up fifty percent of the area. Well, most of the, the reader board kind of things, kind of like flat panel TVs like John was saying, right? So they can easily take up more than fifty percent of the sign. However, they could be limited as far as the overall area of the total monument. And that's where a lot of jurisdictions, they define the size of what you can put in based upon the size of the building, the size of leasable square footage. So there's a lot of good things to look at. So if we're going to say monument signs, we start there. Okay, and then as we go down through it, I mean, as far as NITS and things like that and, you know, different colors, I think we might be getting a little bit too deep in the weeds at that particular point, because if you look at the house drive-in, that's always constantly changing. I mean, who's going to police the six-second change? And what's animation? Is it like somebody having a little rabbit that goes from one side of the sign and then reappears and reappears? You know, that gets a little bit too, you know, unmanageable over times. But if we start with good definitions right in the beginning to say, okay, monument signs, we're going to start there and then start coming up with a calculation on the actual area that we can use, that I think is a good place to go. And then look at the thing she did. Like I said, she did a good job. I'm not saying anything about that. But we need to start defining the terminology. Here's an example. If you look at the Staget, the express burger place on twenty, that's a monument sign. Okay, that's been there as far as I know for the past seven years and hasn't, it hasn't moved, right? So would that be considered permanent, even though you could move it? So there's definitions here that if we're going to start looking at the central business district off of Metcalf and there's plenty of neon on Metcalf, okay, and start taking a look at where we would want to start looking at things, because there's a lot of residential areas off of West Ferry, of Boursath. And if the signage is too bright or whatever, you know, it could be a problem. I've seen other jurisdictions do it that is just for property owners, residential property owners. Next thing you know, you got a ten by twenty, twenty-four by seven high def right across the street, that it's like the Fourth of July. So they're good from a business standpoint. However, we need to iron out the definitions of what you're going to start classifying as permanent. Okay, and if we're going to say monument, okay, that's a ground up. We're not talking twenty feet high. That would be like a wall. So it's a good place to start. And if this is where we want to go, yeah, this is, this is, this is a good, I think, overall format, but there's things that we can look at here, like, you know, item four, you know, sunrise and sunset determined by the National Weather Service. You know, people, you know, those are things that we don't, that's like getting a little bit too deep. I mean, we know what sunrise and sunset is. But I think we can cut down on some of this to make it a little bit more flexible, but also get what we want at the, at the end of the day. Silas. Usually have, this is like right in your wheelhouse.
I got no love for illuminated reader board signs. So I mean, I appreciate that businesses might want them. But, you know, I'm all for banning them inside of the, you know, keeping them disallowed within the historic downtown, but the last thing I want is Seadrwoolly full of illuminated flashing or, you know, reader board signs. And so that's my only comment at the moment.
Anybody else have general comments that they want to get out initially regarding signs in general?
I'm totally with Silas here. I don't like them at all. I think they're awful and I don't see any point in them.
Thank you. Commissioner Fernet?
Yeah, I know that when I'm driving down the freeway and all of a sudden I come around a corner and it's like sunlight in your eye and it's late at night, like these casino reader boards. I think their NITS are through the roof and I think this one part that talks about digital signs shall include ambient light monitors that automatically adjust the brightness. I think if we do these reader board things, that's an absolute must. They have to dim at night because I think it's called light pollution. You know, you'll be able to see it from miles away, like the sun's coming up. And they need to definitely dim at night. And I think it's a great idea, like any good rules and regulations, we start off with a definition page like Joe's talking about, that we all understand what the definitions are of everything, because that's a good place to start.
Thank you. Commissioner Freiburger?
I agree. I think starting with the definition seems to be the way to go, because until we know what we want, knowing how and where to locate them, it may be somewhat of a different thing, but I was thinking about the time and thought that went into placing the school reader board sign. And of course, that's on twenty, right? And so there were other considerations there. But definitely it was something that a lot of thought went into because of how distracting it can be. Those kinds of signs can be for, for drivers and, and the light. So, yeah. That's all I had on it.
That Bingham Park monument, that's an excellent example of how to use the technology. I mean, it's kind of offset from the road. It's adjacent to the industrial center. So you're not getting a lot of, you know, impact on the surrounding community. But you're right, if it's not done right, it could be a real, you know, potentially, you know, somebody can't even sleep at night if these things are going twenty-four by seven, because I've seen them like that and it's it's really a problem. So anyway, definitions, yeah, what are we actually defining here? And as I'm looking at the CBD, where could you even put them in thinking? Because a lot of the buildings, the city owns the sidewalk. So I can think of one example of a monument sign. It's right across from Pioneer Marketplace. It's the fairly new law firm that's got a monument sign. And it's the orientation of the building that allows that, that is on their basic property that they can put that. But looking at West Ferry, Woodworth, Boursath, I'm just trying to figure out where you would even be able to put a monument sign that's even illuminated that's actually on your own, within your own boundaries.
Most places along there could have a monument or a, well, you think of Howells, you know, they've got a parking lot area.
Yeah.
And they've got a sign. If you think of Ene Lumber, they've got a big front area where they could put either a monument or one on a post. Right now they've got a big, they do have a big it's not exactly a monument because it is probably twenty feet tall, but it's got two legs. So and then, you know, James, think of James Market, they would probably want one, there'd be room to put it there. And then on buildings that are closer to the street, they could put them on the building perpendicular to the face of the building.
But are we going to limit it to monument signs? Well, monument and pylon signs?
Well, I think it's a little earlier, a little early to worry about that and like just figure out if if we want to have them, where would you, where, where, what part of the central business district would you want them?
Yeah, I don't think we're just limiting ourselves to monuments. I think that was, even though that was put forward by council member Kessie's proposal, I don't think that she was necessarily just wanting a limit to, to monuments, but Commissioner Maddox, were you wanting to make a comment? I saw your hand raised there.
Oh, well, I just, you know, looking at these proposed regulations from council member Custy and and then thinking more like about the sign at Bingham Park there, like that, that sign would not fit within these regulations because it's like more than two colors. It's a, it's like a, it's more like a TV screen than a what this is describing, like her proposal is for, you know, a background color and a text color. And no animation, no scrolling, no moving graphics, any of that. And so, you know, those types of regulations, I think, make it much more palatable for me. I mean, you know, I can see how Pioneer Market would probably want one or like, you know, John mentioned some other businesses that would probably want these things and you know, I, so I don't know. I think that really it's like you know, I could see him on State Street. There's a lot of places where I it seems like the majority of the central business district, I wouldn't necessarily want to see them, but I could see how there would be a place for them in some places. And I do really like the fifty percent, maximum of fifty percent of the sign face or the area of the sign being limited, because that means that the business has to make a significant portion of the sign reflecting their business. And then the reader board is, you know, it's not just all reader board. And so all of those things, the light sensing so that it dims itself at night and I don't know, I tend to agree with a lot of these. I had never thought of the difference between a monument and a what did you pedestal, pylon sign? And so I, you know, that's definitely something to think about, but I think hammering out where they should go is probably the, or where they shouldn't go is probably the first order of business.
I mean, I, before I move on to, to you, Commissioner Fatisi, so I hear a lot of hesitancy about this subject. But not necessarily outright, you know, refusal of signage. I mean, is everybody okay with, you know, moving forward and just kind of figuring out where exactly? Because I mean, I could go either way. I mean, if people don't even want to, you know, have signage, but that should probably be addressed. I mean, I know Stacy doesn't want it. You know, Commissioner Maddox, you're, you're not exactly too thrilled with it. So I mean, is, is there appetite for, you know, electronic signs within the CBD? Commissioner Fatisi?
If it's done right, okay, and there's some decent guidelines that the council member put together. Like we were talking about definitions that the Commissioner Maddox just brought up about the fifty percent. Well, I would say fifty percent, but the overall one hundred percent can't exceed a certain size. And that's pretty consistent in a lot of jurisdictions. You're not looking at what the tribes do along I five that they're these massive, you know, walls. So if we can come up with a size limitation and then fifty percent of that reasonable size limitation, that it's not offensive, intrusive, and you know, who's to define what offensive is these days, right? Everybody has their own idea of kind of what offends anybody these days. I mean, sometimes I feel like I can't even say a word because I'm going to offend somebody. But anyway, if we could come up with definitions as to, you know, what would be the overall size and fifty percent of what that would be if they decide to go that fifty percent? If we do entertain this, I mean, that would be a start, but, you know, getting definitions down as to what's even going to be permitted, like for instance, New Library. I can't see why you wouldn't want an electronic reader board out there, because they change things all the time, right? You might have something that they have a reading going on, some type of special guest having, coming on that's always going to change. And depending on, you know, the business, I mean, the brewery, right? So they might have some special going on on Thursday or whatever. So they're very effective for businesses to be able to reflect what they have going on business-wise, right? You know, an accounting firm, that doesn't change, right? CPAs, law firms, you know, it's pretty general, but there are other businesses that do have things going on. If we do set parameters, I could see how it definitely benefits the business community if they want it. However, we have the ability right now, before people start doing their own thing to control it and set some guidelines for people. So I'm in favor of addressing it, just because that's just the way it's gonna, it's really going to kind of play out. And you can see the benefit for, for certain things, specifically the library.
Commissioner Maddox?
Well, I'll just say that I, you know, I am, I could support it for a lot of the reasons that Joe just said. And one that's popping into my mind is that they have a reader board at Central Elementary, which is in a residential neighborhood. It's red on a black background or whatever, and it's not offensive, you know, it's like, it's useful for the school. It's, it's not like flashing, it's not super bright. And so I, you know, that, that's an example that's in my head right now of one in town that everybody can walk by and and is probably, you know, tastefully done enough. I can't remember exactly if it's fifty percent of the sign or what exactly how it's configured, but I know that, you know, my kid went to school there, so I'd be seeing it every day and and so I think reader boards like that aren't so bad as like compared to say the one at Bingham Park off of Highway twenty there, which is like I think, I find that one very distracting. I'm like driving down Highway twenty, like reading that thing, you know, whatever. And I would hate to be like walking around town or driving around town and seeing those things flashing everywhere. And so I, I, I am, you know, I can support reader boards, you know, in a limited capacity in the central business district as long as, you know, we do a good job of sort of defining where and when and how.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Penau?
Yeah, so kind of in line with the one at Central Elementary, and maybe somebody already brought this up and I didn't hear you, is Handy Mart. There on State Street, they have one real similar with the black background, the red writing scrolling through, and then the rest of it's just the Handy Mart sign. I find those to be okay. I agree with the TV screen that's shown in the animated cartoon, you have to drive off the road to finish watching. Um, I find those to be okay. I, I agree with the TV screen that's shown the animated cartoon. You have to drive off the road to finish watching is ridiculous. But I do, I do like the one at Central and the one at Handymart. I think that those are good signs and would be, I wouldn't have problems with those.
Commissioner Frenette or Fryburger, do you guys want to chime in here?
Just one thing, um, what was it? Oh, we talked about monuments and pylons, and then there's a one number seven on here, freestanding signs only, no mounting on buildings of any kind. And I thought John mentioned that it could be perpendicular to the face of the building mounted to it. So that's another thing we have to discuss whether that's acceptable or not.
Well, like I said, those were some recommendations that wasn't, this isn't a proposed ordinance by any stretch of the imagination. Um, it's just guidelines that seemed reasonable to, uh, council member Kestee. Um, we can choose from them. It's, we can use it as a menu. We can not use it. Uh, we can use it for, you know, ideas and we can tweak it. Uh, we can go in a different direction. Those are just kind of a basic menu to, to start from.
I guess that's why I brought it up because, uh, would there be three types of signs that we discuss as we discuss this? Or are we going to eliminate the ones attached to a building? Or are there other kinds?
There's, there's, there's other kinds too. The, the basic ones are facade mounted, um, monuments, which usually are shorter. Um, and then pole mounted, which are the ones that get elevated. Um, monuments, uh, the way we generally describe them is those are on the ground, like, uh, like the Yates Dental or the, um, the Oaks Law Firm over on, uh, Murdoch Street. Anything that's on a pole elevated at all, you know, above eye level um, would probably be a, a pole mounted. And the, the way the way we, the reason we make a different differentiation on those is uh, anything that's elevated from the ground becomes a, a lot more dangerous than something that's a monument sign, which is built into the ground. And same with something that's mounted on a building, you know, so we, there's also some building inspection built into why we differentiate between pole mounted and monument. But I think that's semantics at this point. We, well, we can get there. We're not, we're not expecting to, to finish this today. Uh, I was thinking, you know, we can, uh, maybe if we're lucky, have something to, uh, have enough information after today for staff to put together a proposed ordinance to, for, uh, a public hearing at the next city, uh, next planning commission meeting. But I honestly wouldn't expect it to be passed after the next meeting either, because it would just be your first time looking at it. I'm sure that you would want to make tweaks. So I'm anticipating another two meetings after this on this issue.
Commissioner Fryburger?
Well, I was actually thinking along the same lines as, uh, Commissioner Penno and, um, Maddox, I guess it was, the, the signs that have the black backgrounds. I don't know if we want to get that picky, but they definitely are a lot less intrusive and distracting. And I have seen those on other schools and universities and stuff using those and, and it's definitely, it, it does what it needs to do, but it's, it's not bright like so many of the ones on the, the main thoroughfares are that you see. So, that's, yeah.
So unless the planning commission needs to figure out or needs to really have a firm grasp on whether they want monument signs and how they're gonna, you know, like, you know, how bright they need to be. I was hoping we could, uh, just go to, you know, start with the location. Where they'd be allowed. That would be the first step. And then, uh, and then we can hammer out the details and that may, that may lead us to changing the location parameters also, but um, I feel like we're kind of weaving around here a little and like to at least stick to getting, uh, the, you know, where, where in the central business district seems reasonable. And then we can, uh, go with the further details about what they should look like. Right now it sounds like, uh, if I were to be asked to put an or, draft an ordinance for you, I would say, I would, I would, uh, be putting in limitations on the background and, you know, like maybe a two color. Uh, it sounds like the, the signs more along the lines of Handymart and, uh, Central Elementary. It would be doable, uh, from the planning commission's eyes. But what I bring to you wouldn't necessarily be set in stone, so you could make tweaks next time. I'm just trying to take baby steps here.
So as far as sign location goes, does anybody have any strong feelings regarding that? I'm, I mean, I venture a guess that down Metcalf is probably not going to be um, a, a winning argument. But I, I think one of the main things, at least from, from a legal standpoint, is whatever we decide probably needs to be fairly consistent, um, all the way around as far as where and where not. I mean, for example, I, I liked, um, the, the one suggestion about if it's located on the, or if it's a building that's, that has at least a sign aside on Metcalf that to eliminate, um, signage near Metcalf, that it couldn't be on such a building. So, you know, something along those lines where there's a lot of consistency, you know, that, that really defines um, a boundary in which the signs can and cannot be, which to me, um, I think would be really appealing. I think it would give uh, those wanting to implement the signs a lot more guidance. But does anybody have any thoughts regarding where they would and wouldn't want signage to be? Commissioner Fatisi?
You know, there's a lot of residential housing in the CBD. So before we start, uh, like tonight wouldn't be the night to sit back and say, oh yeah, well, this is where you might want to put a pylon versus a monument. I think we need to consider the surrounding, uh, areas in the CBD as to where certain things would be appropriate or they might not be. For instance, you know, because I live right here. Do I think my neighbors down State Street would want a nice little shiny twenty-four by seven pylon sign at James Market? Shut it into their bedrooms? I'll tell you right now, probably not. So we need to consider the surrounding communities as to, and I got it, you know, Metcalf would be the meridian, so to speak. But you have a lot of residences on both sides to the east and the west that depending on how we draft this, uh, we, we want to be considerate of the neighbors that actually have to live with it. I mean, I get it from the business side, you know, you, you can't have it both ways, but there's, there's got to be a happy medium as to what we look at that would be acceptable for both the business owners as well as the people that are living on top of the businesses that, that they use quite a bit. So I'm not too sure that I'm ready to start saying, okay, well, on the western side and eastern from Woodward up to west, you know, we could do pylons and monuments. Maybe we better take a look at the surrounding community composition before we start illuminating the neighborhoods. That's just my two cents.
I think that's a good point. Um, at the same time, I, I still think that having some sort of consistency, just given that the CBD is very awkwardly shaped and the dynamic of it is quite diverse as far as, um, what is located within the CBD. So, you know, what you say makes absolute sense. But maybe starting out with defining where it best wouldn't be may be, um, a good thing to start with, where, where we don't want it to be. For example, Metcalf, you know, is, is within a block of Metcalf. Okay, is, is that too close to the historic district to take away from the downtown historic feel? Um, I mean, things like that. I mean, I, I think that we can help eliminate and, and, and focus in on where it, it can and cannot be. Any thoughts regarding that?
It makes more sense to start with the lower hanging fruit, because you're right, there's going to be places that it's like, now this, this isn't going to work here and that, that's going to be easier than doing a blanket kind of, oh, well, you know, from this larger area. I think, I think you're, you're, you're spot on with that. Identify where you probably don't want it. Well, what type you don't want in that area. Because it sounds like we're leaning towards potentially two or three different flavors of signage here. So. John, what do you think? I mean, you, you, you deal with this pretty consistently. You're, you're mute.
You, you're muted, John.
Sorry about that. If, if you, uh, if you want to think about where in the CBD might be appropriate, it actually starts to whittle itself down pretty quickly. Um, when I think of State Street, I think, yeah, like, okay, that kind of makes sense. You know, maybe Puget Street, um, maybe not. But not Wally, not, not necessarily. So one block south of, we'll go east to west. You think one block south of, um, State Street is, is, um, Warner Street. And you've got the, uh, the Mason's Hall there. Does that seem, you, and you know, that, you've just, that strip there. Does that seem like someplace where reader boards would make sense? I don't know. Um, then you go one block north of State Street and you've got, uh, Woodworth. Um, we've got Woodworth by the, uh, east of Metcalf is, uh, the, the US Bank and the old Chevy dealer. And that's kind of it. Um, and then the museum and the old city hall. Like, do, does that seem historic area? Would we, would we want signs there? And then west of Metcalf, you, it becomes, Woodworth becomes a residential area. So doesn't necessarily make sense to have reader boards in there. And then Ferry's a, Ferry's a tough one, you know, maybe Ferry west of the tracks, I could see reader boards. This is just my gut feeling and I'm putting it out there. I'm not trying to instruct the planning commission, just give me my gut feeling. That would, that would seem to make sense, but then as you get to the other side of the tracks, like it becomes a real, real policy discussion for the planning commission. Uh, the, the, the CBD technically goes all the way down to Puget Street in that area. So, um, trying to think of what's at the corner of Puget and Ferry. Um, oh, that's the, the old, uh, Whidby Bank. So if you think of that neighborhood, and then, you know, basically all four corners of that, three, you know, three corners technically, but just imagine all four corners there. Is that an intersection where you feel like it would be appropriate? That's, that's a tough call.
There was a pylon there at that corner, I think, or is?
There is, but it just has a temperature readout, the, the old clunky click.
Yeah.
Analog click. You can hear it. It makes a nice big thunk when you walk by it. Uh, you know, so if someone were to say, yeah, that's a reasonable location for a reader board, you know, I, I could understand their argument and I could also understand if someone's saying, no, we don't want it there. That's you, that, this is a job for you, but I'm just trying to walk you through some of the, the, the areas in the CBD that, uh, um, and, and give you a visual in your head, what's at that area? You know, like I said, the West Ferry, okay, you know, it's the old, it's the old Ford dealer. And we're anticipating that to be the gateway to the city and hopefully a large uh, mixed-use development there. That might, a reader board might make a lot of sense there, or who knows what's going to be to develop there. Maybe it doesn't make any sense at all. Um, and then north of, you know, north Metcalf up towards, uh, City Hall and Abbott's Alley and Coho. Again, that, that, that's a judgment call if reader boards would be allowed there. Um, and then anything on Highway twenty, you know, sure, why not? They're already allowed all up and down Highway twenty. But that doesn't really answer, you know, do we want it on Murdoch Street heading down there? Just trying to to remind the planning commission of what's there, you know, down Murdoch is all residential all the way down till, uh, you get to Ferry Street. Well, actually, no, till you get to the tracks. And then you've got the, the former Bank of America that's now Janicki. And then across the street, you've got some businesses there. Kind of a historic feel through there. And then you go further south and you've got the American Legion and the, the, um, uh, the museum and the old city hall. And then you go south of there and you've got the, the Napa. And so maybe that, i- i- it, it's tough, tough to define specifically, but where, uh, where the historic ends.
I mean, it, it, it is tough to define. Um, I mean, I, I think a good example of is that, that clunky Whidby Island Bank reader board. I mean, because for, on the one hand, in my mind, you know, that's out of the historic area. So you're not really ruining that historic feel. But at the same time, that's surrounded on three other corners by residential. And even though I agree with, uh, with some of the other client commissioners have said about the central sign, you know, on the school board, I've gotten complaints about that sign from, from neighbors. Um, you know, talking about at night that, that, that sign is just too bright for them. Um, and it disturbs, um, you know, you know, at nighttime when people are either trying to sleep or they don't want that, that constant flashing in the background. So, you know, it, you know, having that, that close to residential, I could easily see it affecting that light pollution, other, other residential areas. So, you know, it's, it is a tough call. And like I said, there's, there's a lot of uniqueness to the CBD and the surrounding area with it.
So I don't see the planning commission jumping to any immediate answers on this. So we could, we could definitely come back to this next week. I think this is a good conversation. I think, uh, everybody's learning a lot and it, it might be a good idea. I'm not going to give you an assignment, but it might be a good idea to, um, you know, walk each of these streets with a map. And maybe make some notes on that map and say, yeah, maybe it doesn't work here, it works here. And then after, after you look at it, you might see some patterns happening that you'll be able to say, okay, well, these areas are maybe okay, and maybe these areas aren't. And then we can compare the planning commission's, um, maps and and see if we get some real obvious answers. And then staff can look at that and, and help and say, you know, try to craft some language to to, um, put into words what you've graphically identified.
You just described what was on my mind. I, I like the idea. And if there's a consensus between us all, we, we create a new signage district.
Walkabouts are always good.
Well, it's a suggestion. And if the planning commission does do something like that, um, and, and can get it to, to staff, you know, we'd love to, love to use the data.
Is there any way to, d- does a city have a way to measure the, was it the knits? For say, Howells, like Howells is a pretty bright, uh, pylon electric board and um, you know, trying to gauge as far as, you know, if that is a standard uh, knit rating, you know, how, how much is that going to affect, you know, other signage if others? how how much is that going to affect, you know, other signage, if others, people take take it to that level?
Well, to, the way knits are measured is you you get a knit gun, it's kind of like a radar gun. I have no idea how much they cost, I haven't looked into it yet. But that aside from that, we could always ask how many knits they're they're programming for. I don't, I I presume that like Houss is the technology and that one's good enough that they they probably know exactly how many knits they're doing, whereas, you know, the the one at Handy Mart is probably going to be a little, little more basic and may not have that all well defined. But yeah, did you, well, we just start asking around what people are are, and I, what people are using, and I've been looking into what standard is from some of the sign industry papers that I've been reading about signage. They and the the night sky nightsky.org has some ordinances that talk about these things, although they don't talk about reader boards as much as I would have imagined they would have. There are industry standards for, you know, nighttime setting and daytime setting. And they're pretty different than 4,000, like at night, I think the industry standard was like 200, it was really surprisingly low. But I I need to do more research into that. And I want to bring that to the planning commission later.
I I just have a quick question, maybe for John, and can we like, if we don't exclude a large percentage of the central business district, like, or say we only exclude, say, the historic main downtown. Can we have a part of the ordinance that says that the reader boards like can't face residential?
Sure.
Place, I mean, I, I don't know how, like, if that gets too complicated, or if that's like a murky, unenforceable regulation, or like because then it's like, can you see it from a residential area? But I hear Eric's point about Central's sign and and then, of course, it pops into my mind, like, if Coho gets one of these, I live right next to Coho, is that thing just going to be like flashing in my window all night and driving me crazy? And so I, you know, I I'm sympathetic to that for sure, even though I did say that Central's wasn't offensive, I I I don't live right across the street from it, so I might have a very different opinion of it in that sense, and so there may be a way for us to, you know, put some exclusions in there that don't just like have to cross out like wide swaths of the central business district. Anyway, that's just something that popped into my head to think about.
Commissioner Fennett?
Oh, I was just going to ask permission to send a link to a article I found on sign brightness, and I could email it easily to all of us if you want to be illuminated on the topic. And it does, it does have a chart right here that talks about different illuminations on different things like signs and what's acceptable and what's not, and the sun itself is 6,500 knits. And you know, tr- traditional billboard static are 150 knits to 250, anyway, it's it's a good article, and there's even a, believe it or not. The research is provided by Illuminating Engineering Society of North America, IESNA, they exist. And it's got some good information.
Yeah, that was, I've come across similar ones, so yeah, if you want to send any information like that, we'd be happy to review it.
Okay. Fired off.
Commissioner Penno?
Yeah, I was wondering on some of them, would they be able to be like on a timer where they could actually shut off at night, so it wouldn't affect the neighbors like the central sign? And things like that, I don't know if that's a possibility, but I was just wondering if that's something that we could look into and see if it would work. To have them shut off.
But and that would actually be very enforceable, too, like, is it on after whatever time o'clock? Then you're, then you're not in compliance. Makes sense?
Either dim or off, yeah.
That's a great point.
You know, you could link that to the established business hours as well, right? So when James Market closes at midnight or whatever, sign goes off, so that that seems like something that you wouldn't get a lot of pushback on anyway.
And I'm sure those signs are are smart enough to have an automatic time on and off. Or they wouldn't even have to, the the owner wouldn't even have to manage it, they just program it in, and then it's set. Hopefully.
Any more thoughts as far as the location? So with, as far as putting together something for next month, you know, it sounds like we're all wanting to be illuminated and enlightened with knits, we, we want some definitions for maybe, maybe the those three main signs, the facade, the pylon and monument, get some definitions that, you know, we can work with and see. Maybe we want, we want to allow all of them, maybe we just want one. And, you know, us as a planning commission, I guess we have our marching orders, too, to literally pound pavement and check out CBD. Is there anything else that you're hoping to get a little bit of guidance on to help provide a little bit of framework and bones for proposed ordinance?
You know, a total size limitation that we were talking about, total area. I mean, I'm okay with that 50% max usable area, let's set a maximum on the entire size of what the sign can be and how we might even want to calculate it. I mean, that's how it is in other jurisdictions, it's actually the the total sign area is based upon the size of the building in the building, the usable square footage, so there's all different examples out there. You don't want something that
Ours already does, Joe, our our sign code already.
Okay, right on.
Size limitations based on the size of the building and the distance from the street and and those things. And so you're welcome to look at those in chapter 1744, our sign code, and see if those still make sense, but those, those haven't, those haven't been an issue since I've been dealing with the signs. We do have, we do have, you know, even if you're like a tiny little store. You can always have an eight by four size, 32 square feet. So, you know, we don't, if you, if you're a coffee shop and you've only got 75 square feet of building, that doesn't mean you only get like four square feet of sign. We, we were reasonable and said, you you can get your, you can get 32 square feet of sign, no matter how small your business is. So you can look at those, too, and those were, we'll dovetail with all of these rules that we're working on, but I think we've got enough to go on. I don't know that we can make any recommendations on like a proposed draft next, for the next planning commission meeting, but I'd love to get some data from planning commission where if you go walkabout and draw on a map showing where would be good and bad, you know, highlighting would be useful. That'd be great.
All right. Any final thoughts before we move on? Commissioner Penno?
Okay, so I know we can't tell some that they can have them and some that they can't, but we probably certainly don't want them you know, right down the street in a row for every business either, though. Right? I mean, I don't know how we'd
I mean, I don't know if we could really legally do that, I mean, if we have it within an area and you're within that area, that defined area, I I don't know if, how well that would go over saying
Right. Oh, you can have one, but you can't.
Yeah, just because you happen to land in that one spot, you're you're excluded, so.
True, or we can end up looking like the Vegas Strip, you know, who knows? Okay.
Any other thoughts?
You'd be right.
All right. With that concluded, hopefully you have what you need. And again, just to reemphasize, go on, try to get opportunity to get out, get some fresh air, go on a walkabout and kind of get your your brain going about where and where not. Moving along to the second item of new business. Introduction to the Shoreline Master Program Update Process. And Catherine, I believe you're leading us in on this?
Yes, so we are working on our periodic review of the shoreline master program procedure, Willie. So I thought I'd go ahead and familiarize everyone who wasn't here in 2016 when we first dwell, which is our last update on what the process looks like and what the shoreline master plan even is, so I'm going to attempt a screen share. Sorry, when I practiced this, I was doing it with a different setup. Okay. So are you able to see my screen?
No.
So we'll have to do without visuals this time. But so I'll just jump right in. So the Washington State Shoreline Management Act, the SMA, was enacted for the purpose of comprehensively managing and protecting the state shorelines. So the idea is, you know, to have a comprehensive go at it instead of if someone has something going on upstream, it'll completely negate the efforts of someone who's doing a really good job downstream. So that was kind of what drove the SMA, and under the SMA, each city or county with shorelines of the state must prepare and adopt a shoreline master program, SMP, that is tailored to each community based on their geographic, economic, and environmental needs. So the SMP is basically a combined comprehensive plan, zoning ordinance, and development permit system for the shoreline jurisdiction, and the shoreline jurisdiction is its separate thing, it's like its own little entity, so it has its own critical areas ordinance, and we'll get into that. And so as part of the SMA, cities and counties who have a shoreline master plan are required to periodically review and update it based on whatever laws have changed or new information, just to keep it current. And so they have a staggered schedule, and cities and counties in Skagit or cities in Skagit County are required to update in 2020, but ecology has extended the deadline to 2021. And the city of Sejorley has obtained a grant, and for the grant agreement, our periodic review must be complete by June 30th, 2021. So yes, the last time there was an update for the shoreline master plan in Sejorley was in 2016. And so we're starting our periodic review for 2020. And as part of that, we're just kind of introducing you and kind of explaining the process and the importance of a public participation throughout the process. And this update is going to be less intense than the last one. It's not a comprehensive update, it's a periodic review. So this time around, we're not going to get into every single document, we're just the Department of Ecology has provided a checklist that kind of goes over things that have changed in the last, goes year by year, and you can go through your hold on, Joe, you have a question coming?
Yeah, I'm looking at your, by the way, the the links that you have to the original master program, it's 2013. It's a great read, by the way, so what, because I was here in 2016 and I don't remember doing a document this big.
So, yeah, that is a little confusing, and the last time it was officially adopted in 2016, but the review process started in 2013.
Okay. It's a great document, by the way, if you love this river, so.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So, yes, we have the Skagit River, and that's a shoreline of the state, and so we have a shoreline jurisdiction which is pretty much all over Riverfront Park, and I believe the Birchview Memory Care Center is also in the jurisdiction. But not much has changed for us since our last update in those areas. So we don't anticipate a lot of changes to our current adopted documents. Other than the main shoreline master program, which kind of outlines all the regulations and policies and goals and provides definitions and things like that, that's where we anticipate most of the updates. And so that's the main thing, the shoreline master program. So now I'm going to kind of do an overview of what documents we've currently adopted. And so we have the restoration plan, which kind of, so the SMA seeks to have a no net loss for you know, the environment of the shoreline. And so the restoration plan kind of identifies the the environment kind of sets goals with an emphasis on maintenance, protection, and restoration and preservation with the intent of meeting the requirement of no net loss. And the shoreline critical areas regulations are unique to the shoreline. They are similar to our overall adopted, but they'll be specific to the shoreline, and they're reviewed as part of the shoreline update in that process, so they're a separate thing from the critical areas ordinance. And the public participation plan, as I mentioned, public participation is very important factor in the update process, we really, we want to seek input from the community on what they want to see on their shoreline and kind of take that into consideration. And so that's a big driving factor, and so we have the public participation plan, and from 2013 slash 16 update, it was a lot more involved because that was a comprehensive update. But since this is a periodic review with few updates anticipated, the 2020 slash 2021 participation plan, which was attached as exhibit A, is a little bit more straightforward and kind of provides a basic description of the goals and the intent and the stakeholders and kind of the process. The shoreline characterization and analysis. So this kind of describes our shoreline conditions, the existing conditions and ecological functions. And it kind of serves as a baseline against which impacts of future development actions in the shoreline will be measured, so it's a inventory of what the current conditions are, and then we monitor any development or plans that go in, and that way we can keep track of our no net loss requirement. So the strategy for shoreline use. This document was prepared as part of the last update. And it's was created as part of the public participation process. And it was kind of a a document that put together a lot of the comments and feedback that was received from the public, and it was built as kind of a living document at the time. And based off of the public participation process, and it's subject to continued public input, and that, that, as well as the participation plan and characterization analysis are supporting documents, and they're not officially adopted. And so we don't anticipate any updates to those documents, we anticipate updates this time around. Like I said, to the master program and potential updates to the critical areas ordinance regulations, just to keep those current, and that's kind of something that'll come along as part of the review. And so as for this meeting, the goal here is to just kind of familiarize ourselves with this, so next meeting will be a public hearing, and we will have prepared the proposed updates to the shoreline master program, so we can review those and receive public comment, and there will be an outreach project, like effort, website posting, mailings and Mailings and we're going to try to seek as much public input as we can. Joe, you have something?
Our waste treatment plant is in that hundred year floodplain. Is there any special consideration that we need to, uh? Think about to incorporate into this document? And this review that addresses safety measures, things that. We already have in place that let's say a worst case scenario, you know, occurs.
So that's interesting question and no, not for the shoreline master plan. That's kind of more of the hazard mitigation plan. That's something that's.
The sewer, the sewer treatment plant might be in the hundred year floodplain, but it's not in the shoreline jurisdiction.
Right.
The, the shoreline jurisdiction is defined as. Um, anything within the floodplain, everything within the, um. The, uh, floodway. And then, um. It, once you leave the floodway, you're not in the. Uh. There, there's this weird like two hundred foot from the, if it's two hundred foot from the floodplain, that, then it's not, then it's in. But the way ours works is, and there's a map included in there. You can see that it doesn't, it basically. By definition, it goes along that bank just south of. The sewer treatment plant that, you know, that, that, uh, runs along the river. And, uh, just goes to there. Um, any wetlands that are within two hundred feet of that area. But like above the bench. Might be jurisdictional. But not. Uh, but not any development on non-wetlands. It, it's, it's a weird. Uh, quirk of how the, the shoreline, uh, management act is written and what it calls jurisdiction. But, um. Yeah, there's, there's not really anything. Uh, that affects our sewer treatment plant. So we don't need to worry about it for this, but our critical areas ordinance and. As Catherine was saying, our natural hazard mitigation plan does address. The, the impacts both on the sewer plant and, uh, and. To the environment if there were a problem at the sewer plant.
It was more of an eyes dotted, teeth crossed kind of question.
Yeah, the, so the interesting thing about the, the shoreline management act is it was created back in the seventies and. I don't think Seadrill Woolly did much. I think it was nineteen seventy-nine. They found that we finally said something. Uh, to the effect, somewhere tucked in a document obscurely saying, yeah. We'll, we'll do what the county does for their shoreline master program. And that was the extent of our shoreline master program until we adopted the, the full updates in two thousand and sixteen. And ecology was kind of like. What? You didn't actually have one? Oh, no. But. We, uh, we got it, we got it all fixed up. So in two thousand and sixteen, that major update that we did was. Well branded like brand new major. As Catherine said, this is just kind of a touch up, uh, periodical review. It's only been a few years since we even adopted. And, um, so. The planning commission is going to be used kind of as a, a sounding board. For public comments. That's the big thing about the, the shoreline master program update is. Ecology wants. Comments, wants. Public input, public input, public input, or at least an opportunity. And that's really, that's really the test that we're going to be, um, measured on for this process. There's really very minor updates to the SMP itself. As Catherine, you know, kind of pointed out which documents need to be updated. So, uh, we're really just going to be asking the planning commission to. Be a, a venue for the. For our public comment process. And it should be fairly simple for the planning commission. You don't need to memorize these documents. Um. It's good to be familiar with them and, uh, be able to speak to. Them, but you're mostly providing an opportunity for, for the, uh, public to comment. You are officially the citizens advisory committee. Is there anything more you wanted to talk about Catherine before we?
Uh, no, you covered it. Um. So we, you know, we're establishing you all as the, the CAC. And so next month will be the first official CAC meeting where we're, we're seeking public input. And reviewing the proposed updates.
Are they going to be different meeting dates? Are they going to be separate than planning commission meetings? Are you going to break them out or?
So we were, it's going to be a part of the planning commission meeting, but I was kind of picturing a separate agenda, um, for the CAC. So it's kind of in the same meetings slot, slot, but.
Switching hats.
Yeah, just kind of switch hats because we do need to log our, our activities.
We may just use the same agenda too. We're, there seems to be less rules about having to be a separate body than there were the last time. So it looks like we might be able to just put it on the same agenda. Make it nice and easy for you.
Yep. Uh, just the main thing is we do need to be able to log, um. Every meeting on your public event we have, um, as part of this periodic review, so.
Yeah, I remember bits and pieces of it from when we did it the last time. And I, I remember how intensive that was, but glad to hear that this is more of a. Uh, nip and tuck type of thing than, than the whole hog, but.
Yes.
Uh. No, it, it, it was, it was definitely, uh, interesting. May, um, put a new perspective on, on shoreline. Uh, management with the Skagit River, so. I thought it was a, a really good exercise and got a lot of good information. I, and I thought, I mean, this has been. How many years now? You know? We started in two thousand and thirteen, so it's almost been. Eight, seven, eight. Um, but I thought that there was something more than just. The schedule ever. Maybe I'm remembering it wrong, but I thought, wasn't there some sort of wetland areas or something else that we had to consider or? Was that just because we were doing the whole hog?
But no, that's what I was saying is under the, and you'll review the critical areas. There's a separate critical areas ordinance for the shoreline jurisdiction. It is essentially our, um. Almost word for word, the same as our regular critical areas ordinance. Um, but there's a few tiny little changes that ecology wanted. Um, so. You're right that, like I said. The, the shoreline master program and the shoreline critical areas apply to the jurisdiction that is basically the floodway. And then. It also applies to critical areas, two hundred feet beyond the, the, the jurisdiction of the SMP. Um. So if there's any wetlands near the, the, the edge of the floodway, then it, uh, then it'll apply there.
Okay, okay.
Also, anecdotally, um, sorry, but the Hanson Creek is also a shoreline of the state. Uh, but only, and I looked into this because we, um, annexed, uh, the Northern State. Hospital and, and Hanson Creek does go through there. So we have part of Hanson Creek within the city now. But it doesn't become a shoreline of the state until it's outside of Seattle. So. We're good there.
Yeah, so any creek that's over twenty CFS and any lake that's over. A certain number of hectares. Uh, we don't have any large lakes and none of our streams flow enough. So, uh, the only one, the only. Uh, river of consequence is the, is the Skagit. For our jurisdiction.
All right. Well, thank you for that introduction. Any questions or comments? Coming out of that? No, all right. Thank you again, Catherine. And that takes care of new business. Which leads us into our final item tonight, uh, our discussion item. Uh, which will require some action, the nomination and election of the twenty twenty-one planning commission chair and. Co-chair, is it technically co-chair, is it vice chair, pro tem?
Pro tem.
Um. Not sure what, what our technical term is. Um. I, I do want to say, um. I am not going to be throwing myself out there this time. I'm going to be stepping back. Um, I'm going to just. Shift down gears and be a, a regular old planning commissioner for, uh, the next little while. But, um, want to open it up for any nominations and, uh. And for both chair and chair pro tem or co-chair. Commissioner Fatizzi?
We have this discussion. I would like to, uh. Do the chair in two thousand and twenty-one. Uh, I feel that the pro tem, uh, role last year was. Really beneficial to me, uh, just from an experience level. Uh, I really care about what we do. And, uh, I think I'd be very effective in this role, uh, in the, uh, in the coming year. So I, I believe that I can nominate myself, which I don't like doing, but I might as well throw it out there. But, uh, yeah, I would definitely like to, uh, chair it for, uh, two thousand and twenty-one. Anyone else?
Is there, is there a second to that nomination or further nominations?
Well, I'll go ahead and nominate Joe Fatizzi as chair. I don't know if it's appropriate for one to nominate oneself, but, uh.
Keep telling me I could do it.
Okay, well, if that flies, I'll be a second.
Is there any other nominations? All right, so I have a nomination by. Commissioner Fatizzi, I'll just say, and then a second by Commissioner Maddox to elect, uh, Commissioner Fatizzi as our twenty twenty-one. Planning Commission Chair. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Pose? All right. You will, you will have the chair next meeting. Um, for chair pro tem, is there? Any volunteers? I mean, if no one wants it, I will, I will do it, but I'm, I'm perfectly fine with just. Going back to being a regular playing commissioner, but if someone does want to step up. Um, or if someone wants to nominate someone in particular. I would accept nations.
Since Pat's not here, let's nominate him.
He may hate us.
Just a thought.
Is there any nominations for pro tem?
Who wants to do it?
Like I said, I'll, I'll do it if no one wants to, but I just wanted to open it up here, so. Anybody? Well, if no one wants to volunteer.
Silas, Silas's hand went up.
Silas?
No, not me.
All right.
I will nominate you though, Eric, so you don't have to nominate yourself.
I mean, if no one else wants it, I'll accept, but I'm, I just wanted to make that very clear.
It's already been seconded. We just need the vote.
Okay. So all those in favor of electing myself Commissioner Johnson as chairman pro tem for twenty twenty-one. Signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose? All right. I guess we, we switch roles next time. Okay, well. Great meeting, everybody. It's going to be a good year. Um, kind of excited for taking on some issues that. Aren't quite as complex and daunting and. And have some real impact on the community. I mean, not that the others didn't, but you know, that these are, are good, solid projects. Looking forward to this next year, looking forward to Chairman-elect's, uh. Fatizzi's role. If there's no other.
I got it denial from my platter.
Is there any other points of discussion that anybody wants to bring up? If not, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
All right, so I have a commit, uh. Motion by Commissioner Maddox and a second by Commissioner Fennett to adjourn the meeting. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Pose? All right, we are adjourned at eight oh nine PM.
Hey, John, one quick question.
Hey Catherine, would you stop the recording?
Is, is there any visi-